We're going to get started shortly. Members can take their Good morning. We're going to get started. The hour has come. Counsel will come to order. So to give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Father Joseph Zeliski of Saint Catherine of Sienna Roman Catholic Church. He is here today as the guest of Councilman Mike Driscoll. Father, will all guests and members please rise?
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Direct or Lord all of our actions, and carry them through by your gracious assistance, so that our every prayer, word, and work may begin with you, and by you be happily completed. And we ask this through Christ our Lord, amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen.
Thank you so much, Father. Appreciate it. Counsel will be at ease. Thank you so much, Father, for your invocation this morning. We really appreciate you being here. Thank you. And our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 13th, 2022. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 13th, 2022 be approved.
Thank you. It has been moved in properly second that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 13th, 2022 stand approve. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and our Journal is approved. And our next order of business is request for leave of absence. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of counsel, there has been a request for leave of absence by Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Councilman. Leave shall be granted for Councilman Johnson. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones. Who is, uh, Councilwoman Squilla here? Councilwoman Bass for matter concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session of council and that were not listed on the calendar circulated prior to today's session.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters considered today may be added to the agenda for this session of council and as required by law, subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters. Resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first reading, the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, amendments to bills recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by counsel that arose too late to be included on the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
Thank you. It has been moved in properly second that the legislative matters stated by Councilwoman Bass may be added to the agenda for today should those matters arise during the course of this session of council. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And the motion passes. And our next order of business is communications. And Chair asks the clerk to please read the messages from the mayor and any other communications that he may have in his possession.
From the mayor to the president and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on October 19, 2022, I signed the following bill which was passed by council at its session on October 13, 2022. Bill number 220655. And I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank, deeds conveying Title II, 2843 through 2861 Janey Street, and 2842 through 2860 Wechel Street located in the First Councilmatic District. And a resolution authorizing the Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank, deeds conveying title to certain properties located in the Fifth Councilmatic District, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. And our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. And I would ask, Mr. Decker, to please read the titles of the bills and resolutions being offered today by our members.
Councilman Thomas offers two resolutions. Entitled, "I have a privileged resolution honoring and congratulating Champion of the Week, Philadelphia Military Academy, for receiving a Department of Army Gold Star as an honorary unit with distinction from the Department of Army for their outstanding performance."
Today's calendar?
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Education to hold hearings to discuss experience in schools as a follow-up to student-led Enough is Enough anti-gun violence campaign discussed in May 2022.
Today's calendar?
Councilman Jones offers five bills and five resolutions. "On behalf of Council President Clark and ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the city of Philadelphia to accept a historically designated building from 2000 Arch Associates, which will move and reinstall the building in Aviator Park, 200 North 19th Street, to become part of the Falmouth Park system under the jurisdiction of the Department of Parks and Recreation."
Verdict Committee?
And an ordinance amending Title 16 of the Philadelphia Code to require that certain designated real estate conveyed by the city to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority or the Philadelphia Land Bank be insured under the city's self-insurance and other insurance program following conveyance.
Verdict Committee?
And an ordinance amending Section 14529 of the Philadelphia Code entitled VDO, Fifth District Overlaid District.
Verdict Committee?
And on his own behalf, Councilman Jones offers an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on both sides of Havreford Avenue between North 67th Street and North 68th Street.
Verdict Committee?
And an ordinance renaming and designating the area of land bounded by 54th Street, Winfield Avenue, and Woodbine Avenue as the Winfield Veterans Memorial.
Verdict Committee?
And on behalf of Council President Clark, a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1510, 1512, 1514, 1526, 1530, 1532 through 34, 1538, 1540, 1542, 1548, 1552, 1554, 1556, 1558, 1563 North Darien Street, 1526, 1528, 1540 North Aids Street, 1501 through 13, 1529, 1545, 1549, and 1551 North 9th Street located in the Fifth Councilmatic District.
Next week's calendar?
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2317 Ridge Avenue located in the Fifth Councilmatic District.
Next week's calendar?
And on his own behalf, a privileged resolution declaring October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Philadelphia.
I'm sorry, Mr. Decker.
A privileged resolution.
I'm sorry. I'm having... Sir? Thank you. Today's calendar. Sorry, Mr. Decker.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Housing, Neighborhood Development, and the Homeless to hold public hearings to examine aging multi-unit structures and expiring Department of Housing and Urban Development contracts to strategize ways to utilize local, state, and federal resources to prevent the displacement of community residents.
Today's calendar?
And a non-privileged resolution encouraging the Law Department to file a lawsuit against the state of Pennsylvania seeking injunctive relief for their refusal to take custody of juveniles sentenced to state facilities who are currently housed at the Philadelphia Juvenile Justice Services Center.
Next week's calendar?
Councilwoman Brooks offers a non-privileged resolution affirming and praising Philadelphia City Commissioners and citizen poll workers in implementing free and fair election procedures to determine the will of all eligible Philadelphia voters and decrying efforts to undermine such officials and citizen participants through bullying and legislative interference. Mr. President, Councilwoman Brooks would like to be recognized for a motion on this resolution.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to prevent consideration of this resolution on today's final passage calendar.
It's been moved in properly second. All in favor of motion indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Motion passes. That will be on today's final passage calendar.
Councilwoman Gaultier offers one privileged resolution entitled a resolution honoring the People's Emergency Center on the occasion of its 50th anniversary.
Today's calendar?
Councilman Squilla offers one bill and one resolution entitled, "An Ordinance Approving the Plan," and this bill is on behalf of Council President Clark, "An Ordinance Approving the Plan, Estimated Costs, and Proposed Method of Assessment and Charges of the Senator-City District, the authority for and concerning business improvements and administrative services to the Central Business District of the city of Philadelphia for 2023 through 2027, amending an ordinance, Bill Number 1069, approved November 2, 1990, as amended by Bill Number 960631, approved November 25, 1996, and further amended by Bill Number 120800, approved December 21, 2012."
Verdict Committee?
And on his own behalf, a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank, deeds conveying Title II, 2843 through 2861 Janey Street, and 2842 through 2860 Wechel Street located in the First Councilmatic District.
Next week's calendar?
Councilwoman Bass offers three resolutions. Entitled, "A Non-Privilege Resolution Urging Drexel University as the recipient of the Atwater Kent Collection to ensure adequate stewardship of the collection and protect the interests of donors, art lovers, and the residents of Philadelphia."
Next week's calendar?
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Public Health and Human Services to hold hearings regarding expanding Philadelphia's mobile crisis response capacity to develop strategies and best practices for non-lethal de-escalation crisis intervention and restraint of individuals experiencing mental or emotional distress.
Today's calendar?
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Parks and Recreation to hold public hearings on the status of the city of Philadelphia's rebuild initiative.
Today's calendar?
Councilman O offers a privileged resolution recognizing and commemorating the 10th anniversary of the Asian American Chamber of Commerce of Greater Philadelphia.
Thank you very much. That concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions. And before we proceed... That concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions. Before we proceed, I would like to recognize State Senator Anthony Hardy Williams. Thank you, sir, for being here today. Thank you, and thank you for coming down to testify. Appreciate that. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to take a moment and recognize that we have 10 students here today and the teacher from the Excelsior School in the 8th District in Philadelphia. If they would please rise, please stand, so we can acknowledge you. And I'm pleased to have them here. They've been collecting autographs. So they've been, you know, welcomed here, and we welcome you, and we hope that you get a good introduction to the legislative process today. These are our future leaders and lawmakers, and certainly citizens and voters. So we're just honored to have them down here with us today. Thank you so much for being here.
Welcome. Thank you all for being here today. We appreciate it. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kim.
Very, thank you very much, Council President. I too want to welcome Mr. Marston's eight students from his civic actions class. They are juniors and seniors in the civic action class at Fox High School, Big Picture High School. We also welcome them. They couldn't all be in this particular room. Many of them are in the overflow room, so we are giving them a good wave and recognizing Mr. Marston and his young student who will be testifying today. So thank you also for being here, and we're so proud of all of you.
Awesome. An awesome school in the Fifth Councilmatic District. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. While we're welcoming people, I'd like to acknowledge Professor, attorney, activist, and black man, Michael Cord, who is here to give comment today on our resolution of apology.
Good morning. Thank you for being here.
With him is Alan Hornblum, author of the Acres of Skin book that precipitated...
Good morning. Good seeing you again.
And we have Pam Lawson, Youssef Anthony, Levon Miller, Priscilla Morris, and Andrea Jones Austin.
Good morning, and thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Okay. That concludes our introductions of our individuals. And again, we thank you all for being here today. And our next order of business is reports from the committee. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla for report from the Committee on Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Finance reports out three bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Finance, which is referred Bill Number 220659, entitled in ordinance amending Bill Number 220401, entitled in ordinance amending Chapter 19, 1500 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Waging Net Profits Tax by revising certain tax rates under certain terms and conditions to correct a typographical error in stating the period in which a reduction in the resident net profits tax is applicable. And Bill Number 220660, entitled in ordinance amending Bill Number 210284, entitled in ordinance amending Chapter 19, 2600 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Business Income Receives Taxes by revising certain tax rates under certain terms and conditions to fix a mistake in identifying the tax year in which a tax reduction applies, so that the tax reduction applies in fiscal year 2023. And Bill Number 220742, entitled in ordinance authorizing an increase in the non-electoral indebtedness of the city within the Pennsylvania constitutional limit, authorizing the Bond Committee to sell bonds at public or private negotiated sale to provide funds toward various capital municipal purposes, providing for appropriations of the Sinking Fund Commission for the payment of such bonds, and authorizing agreements to provide credit or payment or liquidity sources for the bonds. Respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Chair again recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that rules of council be suspended as to permit the first reading this day of Bill Number 220659, 220660, and 220742.
Thank you. It has been moved in properly second that the rules of council be suspended, so as to permit the first reading this day of Bills Number 220659, 220660, and 220742. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar at today's session. Next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bill just reported from committee with suspension of the rules have been deemed to have had a first reading. These bills will be placed on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. But there are no additional bills on our first reading calendar today, so the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on our final passes calendar today.
Thank you, then, Mr. President. The following resolution of bills are being called up from second reading and final passes calendars today. Numbers, 220834, 220836, and 220837. All other bills and resolutions are being held.
Thank you, Councilman. And before we hear the bills and resolutions on our follow-up passes calendar today, we will have our public comment session. Our public comment session will go as follows. Your matters most concerned, matters on the second reading and final passes calendar for possible action at today's council session. And I see Councilman Squilla. Would you need to be recognized?
Yes.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to request to be excused for business today. I'd like to be recorded as aye on all bills and resolutions.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Leave shall be granted. Thank you, Councilman Squilla. Once you sign up, you'll be called in order in which your name appears on the sign-up sheet. And under ideal circumstances, we will have three minutes. We have a relatively significant volume of individuals today, so I want to ask individuals to please adjust your testimony to have two minutes. Hope for your accommodation for that. From time to time, we must adjust. We want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to speak. In order to be fair to those wishing to speak, though, we intend to hold faithfully the established time and number. So when you begin speaking, you will see a green light and a podium. When there are 30 seconds remaining to your time, the light will turn yellow, which is your signal that the remainder of your time is coming. You will see a light, and we ask you to please conclude your remarks. At this point, we ask you to please yield the podium to the next speaker if you have not already done so. Also reserved the right pursuant to council rules. If there is repetitious comments on the same subject matter, we allow the right to adjust the list of speakers to not include everyone. Please come to the microphone and give your comments. Mr. Decker, I want to ask you to read the first name on the list. I want to thank you all for your willingness to come down and testify at today's council session. We appreciate it.
The first speaker we have today is Senator Anthony Williams, commenting on 220837.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Max. Mr. President and my colleagues in City Council, and to my Councilwoman Jamie Gaultier. Today is an extraordinary day. For many of us who've watched this city for generations, the city's changing, and sometimes it makes us uncomfortable. This day, recognizing Julia Chin and naming a street after her is not only supportive and important because of we're naming a street, but because of the history that Julia Chin represents to many of us in this room. She was part of a movement that brought women, people of color, to power in politics and put many of us in these seats in City Council, state government, and Congress. She was an activist and maintained the integrity of a community that sometime many of us harken to and would like to see continue today. I also want to acknowledge, though, that Councilman Jamie Gaultier, who is a new council member, is challenging for many of you who are new to have relations with those of us who've been around for a while. I want to tell her that she's listening, and she's acknowledging the foundation upon which we all stand. I want to thank you all for considering her today, considering this legislation. Julia's family, and Julia looking above from heaven. God bless her, and God bless you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you for your testimony today.
The next speaker is Michael Cord Esquire, commenting on 2203836.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. President, and I will be brief for a couple of reasons. One, that's the protocol. And two, I'm in the middle of a jury trial. My name is Michael Cord. I'm here to speak in support of Resolution Number 220836. And I'll make this quick. I would hope that everybody could just pause for about 10 seconds and imagine being in a cage for nearly a quarter century, presumed innocent, but at the same time enduring what can best be described as excruciating skin patch test, cruel radioactive isotope studies, pernicious diet studies, as well as sadistic chemical warfare experiments and heinous mind-controlled experiments. Poor black men, poor brown men, poor white men, poor black women, poor white women, poor Latino women endured this for nearly a quarter of century right here in Philadelphia from 1951 to 1974. Thanks to the sadistic imagination of the University of Pennsylvania and Dr. Albert Kligman in collaboration sadly with the city of Philadelphia, those men and women became human guinea pigs for the most egregious type of studies you can imagine. We all know about the Tuskegee Experiment for 40 years, 1932 to 1972. As bad as that was, arguably, this could be worse. Tuskegee was about no treatment for victims. Philadelphia was about mistreatment of victims. I'm going to wrap this up by saying that there are folks who know much more about this issue than I do. Alan Hornblum will be speaking later, along with Levon Miller, a survivor who experienced this horror, Pam Lawson, a descendant of one of those, and finally, Adrian Jones Austin. Again, I thank you all, Mr. President. I thank Councilman Jones for initiating this, and I'm in full support of Resolution 220836. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Reverend Dr. Lorena Marshall Blake, commenting on 220834.
My name is Reverend Dr. Lorena Marshall Blake. Thank you, Mr. President, and I'm here speaking on behalf of Resolution Number 220834, the renaming of the street for Reverend Leonard George Carr. Leonard Carr was born in Virginia in October 25, 1902. He was a third-generation minister. And while he was there attending Lincoln University, he was invited by a group of Christians to be their spiritual leader. And they started a missionary Baptist church in West Philly. They initially met in a home, and then they moved on and had a property at 57th and Vine Streets. Thus, in the height of the Great Depression, the Vine Street Baptist Church was established with the Reverend Leonard George Carr. By 1935, the congregation outgrew the space. They worshiped there until 1945, where they then secured a down payment for the Palatine Reform Church at 5600 West Dorot Avenue. In April 1945, with great fanfare, the congregation marched from 56th and Vine to where we are now at 56th and Dorot Avenue. Reverend Carr was the builder. He led the congregation in finishing the basement. Again, doing other things at the height of his ministry, he sat in the sanctuary for a service He sat in the sanctuary for a service starting at 10:45. One would have to arrive by 10:20. Again, he was a community activist. He organized a baby well clinic in the church. Under his leadership, a scouting program was offered for girls and boys. The church had a large Sunday school in the 1950s and 60s. The youth received further training in the Baptist Training Union, now known as the Youth Fellowship and Youth Adult Fellowship. So again, Mr. President, we thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the renaming of the Vine Street Baptist Church. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next? The next speaker is Pastor Ralph E. Blanks, commenting on 220834.
Good to see you again.
Good morning, Council President Clark, members of City Council, and our Councilman, Councilman Jones. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in support further of Resolution number 220834, the renaming of the street in memory and honor of Reverend Dr. Leonard George Carr, who also was a denominational leader. He was a member of the National Baptist Convention USA Incorporated, where he served as the treasurer for over thirty years. During this time, he partnered with the Foreign Mission Board to start the Vine Memorial Baptist Church Mission and School for Girls in Freetown, Sierra Leone. He was president of the Pennsylvania State Baptist Convention and officer of the Philadelphia Baptist Pastors and Ministers Conference, a member of the Pyramid Club, and he served on the board of the Berean Institute. Reverend Carr was also a civil rights activist. In 1957, he invited the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. to preach at Vine Memorial and also featured his wife, Mrs. Coretta Scott King, in an afternoon concert. During the late 50s and late 60s, Reverend Dr. Carr joined with the Reverend Dr. Leon Sullivan and others seeking better paying jobs and positions with local companies that were patronized in Philadelphia. Reverend Carr was also a man of vision. At Vine Memorial's 40th anniversary celebration in 1972, he wrote in his letter to the congregation, "A peep into the future has me visualizing the day which is fast approaching when we shall own the entire block from 56th Street to Fraser Street, and we are planning in the near future an educational building with classrooms as well as recreational facilities." Because Reverend Dr. Leonard George Carr laid a firm foundation for the Vine Memorial Baptist Church, West Philadelphia, and the city of Philadelphia, as we continue to celebrate the church's 90th anniversary, we would respectfully, with deep appreciation, recognize his contributions and request honoring him by renaming the 600 block of North 56th Street the Reverend Dr. Leonard George Carr Way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Reverend.
I'm Ralph, pastor of the Vine Memorial Baptist Church.
Thank you. Thank you, Reverend.
The next speaker is Tim Brown.
Council President Clark, distinguished council members, my name is Tim Brown. I'm the organizing director for Philly Neighbor Networks. I'm here to speak on the Brooks Democracy Resolution, which will be offered today as a privileged resolution. It speaks to an ongoing threat to our nation, so I won't mince words. What happened on January 6th, 2021, and the months that led up to it are nothing less than an act of treason against the United States. If this were our past, it would still warrant a reminder of the treachery that took place on that day when a sore loser unleashed an armed mob to our most sacred space, the People's House, in an attempt to stop our most sacred act as a nation, the peaceful transition of power, the hallmark of our democracy. Alarmingly, what happened on January 6th is not an outlier. In fact, it continues today with attempts by hyper partisan election deniers to infiltrate election boards and poll watching, to rewrite the laws to make it more difficult to vote, and ultimately to destroy our democracy. I'm sure there's not a person in this room who thinks that this kind of behavior is normal political action. So I ask that council members vote today in support of the Brooks Democracy Resolution to reaffirm our belief in the democratic process. This resolution, coupled with the recent successful prosecution of two Virginia men who brought high powered weapons to our city to interfere with our vote counting, sends a clear message to those who think they can come into Philadelphia and cause trouble, not in our town. And I ask for your support of the Brooks Democracy Resolution, and I invite you to join us across the street at Payne Plaza later on today for the January 6th Justice Rally in Defense of Our Democracy. Thank you for your time.
So we're going to, we have three individuals who are scheduled to testify on a non-privileged resolution that was introduced today. It is actually not on the calendar today, which is inconsistent with the rules, but I'm assuming that they came down here, so we're going to allow that to happen if it's okay with the members today. But in the future, make sure that people know that the testimony must be on the final passes, which these, this particular resolution is not on today. So with that, Mr. Decker, please call your name.
The next speaker is David Robinson.
Good morning. I'm David, well, good morning, Council President and council members. I'm David Robinson, president of District Council 33, Local 159. I represent the youth detention counselors at the Philadelphia Juvenile Justice Service Center, and I would like to thank you for allowing us to speak for this short period of time. Earlier today, you said we had to overflow, and we couldn't allow young people into this room to witness something great. Imagine these kids laying on the floor, being in a room where the capacity is 180, but you're holding 240. Imagine these kids, yes, they're the city's responsibility, but ultimately they're the state's responsibility. There's 80-plus kids in the Philadelphia Juvenile Justice Service Center who should not be there. On October 4th, 20 staff members were injured trying to break up a fight between multiple units inside the Philadelphia Juvenile Justice Service Center. Twenty staff members. On certain days, there's only four staff members that can report to work to watch over 240 individuals. Those individuals are incarcerated for the crimes that is going on in this city today. The murders that are going on in this city today are mostly by the young folks, the ages from 15 to 19, and that's what's in there today. They bring their gangs in there. They bring their drills in there, and young people know exactly what drill is. It's dangerous. It's time that the state step up, take responsibility for their children, because I have members that depend on me to do my job and to keep them safe, and I cannot do that as long as the state has 80-plus kids in that building that should not be there. I don't want to take anybody's time, but I have members that actually can speak firsthand on it, but thank you, City Council, for allowing me to testify today. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Ebony Richards.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, members. My name is Ebony Richards. I'm the 62th Union Delegate at the PJJC. I work in the morning. I wanted to testify and speak about the experience that we had with the four staff. I was one of the staff that got the email of the schedule, and I got out of my bed at 1:00 in the morning and reported, because I did not want my peers to be alone and work in dangerous conditions. Again, we had the responsibility to make sure the youth are safe, and we are safe as well, but we are working in vile conditions, and it's unacceptable and it's outrageous at this point. And right now, we're just seeking help, as much help as we can get, however you can help us. We need help. We need it immediately. Someone is going to end up dying in that facility. We need help. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Corinne Stokes.
Good morning, Council President and members. My name is Corinne Stokes. I am a YDC counselor at the Detention Center, as well as the shop steward for the Local 159, and the members that work in that building. I am actually the one that reached out to council initially to inform them of what was going on in the building, and I did that because it is a very dangerous situation. We cannot continue to work in this situation and keep ourselves safe or the residents. As of today, there were 223 residents in the building. We are only supposed to hold 180. There are 17 staff working in the building right now. There should be at least 53. That's how understaffed we are and overcrowded we are. The children are sleeping on mattresses on concrete floors in the building. The emissions area, which is not a housing area, has 20 children there. It's overcrowded. It's not built for them to be living in that area. This is initially supposed to be a 10 to 14 day holding facility. Some of these residents have been there for over a year. The last meeting that I was on pertaining to the state, we had three meetings within one day, and the state didn't even bother to get back on the last call. That was not only disrespectful, but it was disheartening to those that work in this building. We signed up to do this job. We want to do this job, and we want to be able to do it properly. On the incident that occurred on October 4th, 20 staff were injured, injured trying to break up fights, but at the same time, they would be assaulted as well because these kids wanted to continue to fight. And on the following days, an additional five staff got hurt. Someone tried to take actual staff keys and badge so they would be able to try to escape the facility, which is not really possible, but they attempted to do it. We need help, and we need help now.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Peter Winslow, commenting on 210913.
Good morning. My name is Peter Winslow. I'm a Philadelphia resident. I speak to you today as president of a smart collaboration. Thank you, President Clark, and members of council, for this opportunity to speak in support of Resolution number 210913. Thank you, Councilmember Bass. This past Tuesday, I was at Maplewood Mall in Germantown at a rally to send off the Power Freedom Express. It is a bus of clergy that will be traveling across Philadelphia and across the state of Pennsylvania with the mission of restoring faith and democracy. That's my mission, too. So I offer this resolution authorizing the City Council to compel the attendance of Mayor Kenny to explain his refusal to implement and enforce ordinances number 210956 and 200425 duly enacted into law by the City Council of Philadelphia. Whereas the duties of the mayor of Philadelphia are to execute and enforce the ordinances of the city and all general laws applicable to the ordinances, and whereas Mayor Kenny took the oath of office and swore to discharge the duties of the office of mayor with fidelity. And whereas Bill number 210956 to establish the Philadelphia Public Financial Authority was passed by City Council on March 17th, 2022, and whereas Bill number 200425 to promote healthy outdoor public spaces was passed by City Council on December 3rd, 2020, and whereas Mayor Kenny returned Bills number 210956 and 200415 without his signature and without exercising his veto power, which pursuant to the provisions of Section 2-202 of the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter made it as legal and binding as if he had signed it, and whereas by not exercising his veto and explaining his reasons for opposing Bills number 210956 and 210415, Mayor Kenny deprived council and the people of Philadelphia the opportunity to consider whatever reasonable objections he may articulate and to modify the legislation if appropriate. And I apologize because I'm only halfway through the resolution, but I realize I can't enter a resolution, but you council people can, so I'll just leave this resolution on the podium for Mr. Decker. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Malay Smith.
Good morning. My name is Malay Smith. I'm currently an 11th grader at Vauxhall Picture High School. I am here today to talk about some concerns that happen in our city schools and have an effect on our daily lives. I want to speak up for Philadelphia's youth who face certain challenges in our city school environment. I plan on making a change for us by speaking out. I feel like our voices aren't being heard enough. I have a couple of issues I wanted to talk about today. Number one, staffing level. Staffing level is a problem that has a big impact on our students today because students build relationships with staff members that are suddenly forced to leave. We are regularly forced to take standardized tests that many of our students do not have the ability to or even complete, let alone succeed. We don't have, we don't have time to learn and master the material, especially when we consider the learning gaps that many of us have faced. Curriculum is another problem in relation to how we aren't getting taught about things that could help us in the real world and how we can apply the skills in the future. At Vauxhall Picture High School, they help us with our future careers. We're given many opportunities that fit our future careers or passions. We are provided with certification programs and internships that fit most students' careers. Most programs are outside of school for us to get a feel for the real world experiences. And being on our own at high school, students on our way to post-secondary success, why aren't more, more schools focused on real world learning? We are also limited on trips. We can go on because of strict unnecessary travel rules. Suburban white kids get more, better opportunities to experience learning out of the classrooms than me and my classmates. Certain schools lack access to transportation. You have to live a certain distance from school in order to get a bus pass to Rasteford for free. If you live more than 1.5 miles away, you don't get a free pass. There are no school buses. We should have the opportunity to have door-to-door or school-to-neighborhood transportation, just like what is normal for white suburban kids. Mental health is an issue that is becoming bigger and bigger in the city. It should become a bigger priority in schools across our city, and free resources should be provided to students and families. At Vauxhall Picture, we have licensed clinicians to support the mental health of the school community, and it's still not enough. On most holidays, our schools have off on the day of Ramadan. I meant, on most holidays, our schools have off on the day of. When Ramadan comes around on the school calendar, we are off on the day before. I would like for us to have a day off. My classmates and I at Vauxhall Picture are willing to make a change. Whatever we can do to help, to help me, help make this community better, we are open to it. What I would like to get out of this meeting today is more awareness for issues that could be easily fixed, as well as the ones that require more time and effort. More, more funding for tritts, more thoughtful transportation solutions, and more free mental health resources that should be provided to all students and families are the priorities. Hopefully, hopefully me speaking out.
Mr. Smith, can you kind of wrap it up, please? Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. We really appreciate it.
The next speaker is Obona Higgins, commenting on 220654.
Morning. Great morning, everyone. For the record, my name is Obona Higgins, and I'm speaking on the curfew bill. I know we all want to reduce, we want to reduce crime and violence in the city, especially with our youth, and as of this date, our youth crime rate is higher than it's been in decades. But I don't think the answer is to curfew, is to have a curfew for our children. The data clearly states that youth curfew does not have an effect on crime and violence. And I'd like to draw your attention to a few incidents that happened a few weeks, over the past few weeks. the past few weeks. The Roxborough shooting, which happened, what, around 4:30 in the afternoon? And when the children are going into the Wawa's, that's happening right after school. So how will that youth curfew help when our youth who are committing crimes? And let me just, you know, state for the record that it's not the majority of our youth that are involved in this, you know? So there are programs that are needed. I hear the young sister speaking about the problems in her school, and we need to have more programs. And I know that Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson has the career centers, I forget exactly what they're called, for the youth to go to if they're caught with this curfew that was in effect. But I don't think that's the answer. And one other thing we need to think about is that this body passed a bill to decrease the interaction of police with the Driving Equality Bill. So what we're doing now is like replacing that interaction that we wanted to stop or that you guys wanted to stop with interactions with the young people. And that's not going to be the answer. All it will take is for one student or one young person to get shot or to say something and not be able to interact properly, you know? And then it blows up, and our youth don't deserve that. Our youth deserve love and attention and programming to be able to further their life.
Thank you, Ms. Hager. Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Alan Hornblum, commenting on 220836.
Alan Hornblum, speaking on the resolution today. Want to thank President Clark, Councilman Jones, members of council. You may not know it, but today and October is the 90th anniversary of the start of the Tuskegee Syphilis Study. That piece of research, which is well-known as the most unethical in American history, went on for 40 years, as Michael Cord said. Regrettably, the only thing that rivals it takes place right in the city of Philadelphia. In Tuskegee, you had several hundred men who were sick and went without treatment, prevented from treatment. In Philadelphia, you had thousands of men who were healthy but then made ill. The Philadelphia experiments ran from 1951 to 1974, and it may not have been known to the Roehhouse people of Philadelphia or maybe members of this body. In fact, I could probably give you a quiz right now. Who was the president of City Council when those experiments started? Who was the mayor of the city in 1951? But they go on through year after year, decade after decade, for a quarter century, and it's nothing that we should be proud of. But if we did not know it or knew it and decided not to act, there were other people around the country who well-knew that Philadelphia was the place to go if you wanted to test dangerous chemicals on individuals. J&amp;J in New Jersey, Dow Chemical in Michigan, the U.S. Army in Maryland, tobacco companies in North Carolina, all came to Philadelphia because experiments could be done there. And that is something that we should be very regretful of and try to figure out why those experiments went as long as they did. And I think it's a tremendous sin of omission that no one of substance, with all the academic institutions, with all of the medical schools and law schools, nobody spoke out about what was occurring in northeast Philadelphia. He says time's up, but it wasn't up on the experiments. They went on year after year, and nobody raised the problem and shut them down.
Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Pamela Goodman Lawson, and I want to speak today on my father's behalf, Alan Lawson, who also was a member of the experimental episode that was just explained by Dr. Allen. I'm a caregiver of my father. My father has passed since then. I witnessed from a teenager on what the effects are of these experiments on the individual men and women. It is very detrimental to the family. There are psychological effects on this, even when they tried to help others. My dad tried to help other prisoners after he got out. He was doing a lot of research on this when he got out, and he was really asked to leave the prison because he was getting in depth and finding out a lot of information. He witnessed a lot. He went to the Senate in Washington, D.C. and spoke to the Senate about the experiments to Senator Edward Kennedy. I was a young child then, a young teenager. I didn't know the impact of it until I became his caregiver and saw the psychological effects of his health problems and how he refused to have certain medications and things. He was really hesitant about taking things to cure his illnesses because of what was dumped at him in the prison. So for the caregivers and families, we've had to really convince our family members to take modern-day treatments, and they were so antagonized by the whole episode that it was a real chore to do and deal with. And I'm happy to hear that you guys want to hear about what's going on and what went on back then. It's a long time coming. I think all the abuse done and a lot of these human trafficking, prisoners being tested, you know, all these things are really because we're not seen as human beings. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your testimony.
The next speaker is Yusuf Anthony, commenting on 220836.
Good morning, Council.
Good morning. Good morning, sir.
My name is Edward Yusuf Anthony. In 1964, I was involved in the tests in Holmesburg. And I'm still suffering from that in this day and time, with weaknesses breaking out from the chemicals they put in me. And, you know, it's a shame that they allowed that to happen, to be victimized as a guinea The tests messed me up real good. As you see, I'm walking on a cane now. I have weaknesses. I can't hardly see, you know, from the different chemicals and substances that they was using on the inmates in the prison. And I hope that it never happens again. You know, it was a heck of a catastrophe, and I'm sorry that I involved myself, and I wouldn't like to see anyone else getting involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your testimony.
The next speaker is Adrienne Austin, commenting on 220836.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Adrian Jones Austin, and I'm here to support the Holmesburg Prison Experiment subjects and families. Thank you all for having me and being here, willing to listen to us finally. My father was Leodis Jones, and he was a participant in the experiments, but I don't know if everyone knows the extent of this, but the big issue with this is that they were not fully disclosed about what they signed up for. That's the issue. I think it's important that, as Mr. Yusuf said, doesn't happen again. I'm no longer a Philadelphia resident. I'm from Virginia now, but I was born and raised here. My father passed away a few years ago. He was a whistleblower on these experiments when he saw that something was wrong. And then after that, he was called to testify in Washington to testify why he thought these experiments were unethical. As a result of that, eventually, they were stopped. My father protested for decades to hear the apology that I heard, and I'm blessed to hear that. When he passed away, I was contacted by several people wanting to do stories, and I was listening, and I said, hey, this is a bigger issue than what I thought, because I was a little girl when this happened. I was younger than these kids here. When my father came home from prison for serving time for receiving stolen goods charge, he wasn't the same. He wasn't the father that took me to baseball games in the park, and I could ride on his shoulder. Said I wasn't going to do this. When he came home from work, he was the breadwinner. Then he got sick, you know, he changed. His mental changed. He became hostile and sometimes violent. I'm not going to dress it up. As a result of that, the family broke up. I was, I'm the oldest girl, and I witnessed a lot of that behavior, that change in my father, the poison that was in his system. I thought he had became a madman. I was scarred for the rest of my life. I was emotionally damaged. I ran away from home. I was placed in foster care because I was confused. Not only was he sick, but the separation of the family, my family was destroyed. So I graduated to street-level problems, just confused. I was diagnosed being emotionally disturbed in my preteens. I couldn't get it together. This is how deeply scarred I was and still suffer to this day with some things, but I manage my mental health now. Okay? I became, I became a lawbreaker. I'm a recidivist. I can say that now. I'm a recidivist, but what I've done with my life is I became an activist for people coming out of the system. Now I'm here carrying the torch that my father carried because I felt compelled to do so. And I have no understanding why there was so much silence as it pertained to the experiments. A lot of people were harmed in the system. The families were damaged. The community of Philadelphia was poisoned, and no one opened their mouth. And these officers knew what was going on. These people were poisoned inside and led out into the streets to poison the rest of the community. And there's a lot of us walking around here, sick and damaged from those experiments. They're just too ashamed to talk about it. I'm not the only one. I'm just one that's brave enough and not going to hold that lie for the rest of my life. I had to relieve myself and come out here and say to y'all, this don't need to happen again. And I appreciate the apology from the mayor, and I hope others, and they know who they are, step up to the podium and say we apologize because it's needed. Now, we have to, some kind of way, I would like to see these medical professionals come forth and begin to help us heal, because there has to be some peace between the medical professionals and the black and brown community.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
The next speaker is Lynn Landis, commenting on 200425.
Morning. Good morning. I'm Lynn Landis, founder of WildFoodies.org. I would like to add to my comments of last week in support of Councilmember Bass's resolution to enforce Bill 200425, the Healthy Outdoor Spaces Bill. First and foremost, if Fairmount Park had a good tractor hedge cutter, they would not need to spray toxic chemicals or hire more employees in order to trim the vegetation along the park's roadways and walkways. These hedge cutters are made in Great Britain, the land of many hedges, as well as in other countries. If the city cannot afford to buy a hedge cutter, myself and others would be more than happy to donate significant sums to make such a purchase possible. Secondly, I would like to suggest to City Council that they create a committee to promote local self-reliance in Philadelphia, particularly for wild food, fiber, and medicine. Currently, we are not prepared for any long-term disasters, neither natural nor man-made. Instead, we are completely dependent on imports from far away. Most people have no idea how important wild plants are and what wild plants can do for them. We need to change that. We need to look at our parks, cemeteries, and other open spaces and consider the role they can play in feeding, medicating, and clothing our population, plus much more. I'm not suggesting that these spaces be converted into farms, but instead use the park settings to encourage the growth of wild plants, bushes, trees, and vines that can provide us with vital resources. In particular, we have waged war on invasive plants instead of looking at them as gifts from nature which should be harvested for the benefit of all. But none of this can happen if the city continues to spray toxic pesticides on public lands. Please support Councilmember Bass's resolution to implement and enforce Bill 200425, the Healthy Outdoor Spaces Bill. And also, please support Fairmount Park's purchase of a tractor hedge cutter. And in the future, I hope we can ban the use of all toxic pesticides on our precious soil in Philadelphia and around the world. You can learn more at WildFoodies.org. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for your testimony.
There are no other speakers today, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes our public comment session for today. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on a second reading and final passage's calendar. Mr. Decker, I would ask you to please read the title of Resolution Number 220834.
A resolution also naming the 600 block of North 56th Street as Reverend Leonard George Carr Way in honor of Reverend Leonard George Carr, the founder of Vine Memorial Baptist Church.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and property second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, I'm sorry, just counting, making sure we have nine members here. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 220836.
A resolution formally apologizing for the heinous acts of abuse and torture perpetuated against inmates at Holmesburg Prison during the 1950s and 1970s.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of members of council, I move for this official apology to be recognized in a standing vote.
Motion is approved. Mr. Decker, 220837.
A resolution renaming the 6,000 block of Spruce Street Julia Chen Way in honor of the life and work of civic leader Julia Chen.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones. I don't say, Councilman, Guardia, Guardia is not here. Councilman Jones, just make a motion, please.
I move on behalf of Member Gardier to approve this resolution.
It's been moved and property second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is approved. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolutions today?
A resolution honoring and congratulating champion of the week, Philadelphia Military Academy, for receiving a Department of Army Gold Star as an honor unit with distinction from the Department of Army for their outstanding performance, introduced today by Councilmember Thomas and Councilmember Jim.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and property second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and motion carries. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Education to hold hearings to discuss youth experience in schools as a follow-up to the student-led Enough is Enough anti-gun violence campaign discussed in May 2022, introduced today by Councilman Thomas.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and property second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and motion carries. Resolution is adopted. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Housing, Neighborhood Development, and the Homeless to hold public hearings to examine aging multi-unit structures with expiring Department of Housing and Urban Development contracts to strategize ways to utilize local, state, and federal resources to prevent the displacement of community residents. Introduced today by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you again, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and motion carries. Councilwoman Gim, did you need to be recognized?
It's at the end.
Okay. Thank you.
And a resolution affirming and praising Philadelphia's city commissioners and citizen poll workers in implementing free and fair election procedures to determine the will of all eligible Philadelphia voters and decrying efforts to undermine such officials and citizen participants through bullying and legislative interference. Introduced today by Councilwoman Brooks. Councilwoman Brooks.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brooks.
Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted. Um, Councilman Thomas, did you need to be recognized?
Sorry, no.
It's not? Okay. No problem. We're still dealing with the new technology.
And a resolution honoring the People's Emergency Center on the occasion of its 50th anniversary. Introduced today by Councilwoman Gardier.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gardier.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank my colleagues, uh, my colleague Majority Leader Jones for moving the earlier resolution. And if it's okay, I'd like to speak on that one, um, in this one as well.
Okay.
Um, today we voted on a resolution to rename the 6,000 block of Chestnut Street Julia Chin Way to honor the life and work of a woman who spent her entire life working for the betterment of the people around her. Mrs. Chin served her community through direct action for more than 60 years, serving as a Democratic Committee person, president of the 18th District Neighborhood Advisory Council, and founding the Cobb's Creek Town Watch Community Organization. She was known to those around her as a loving woman who was particularly invested in children, orchestrating trips to amusement parks and, um, hosting annual toy drives. Mrs. Chin passed away last September, and the void left by her absence continues to be felt by all who loved her. But her legacy of civic engagement and community action will live on through the hosts of family and friends who still cherish her legacy. I'd also like to acknowledge Senator Williams and thank him for coming today to speak about Mrs. Chin and what she meant to her West Philadelphia community. And I just want to thank my colleagues for voting in favor of this resolution. Um, it means more to my community than you know, so thanks so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Um, and, and moving on to the PEC resolution. Um, before I move for, uh, the adoption of this resolution, I'd like to acknowledge the People's Emergency Center for the decades of work that they have done to ensure that children and families experiencing homelessness in Philadelphia have access to resources and safe spaces. This year, PEC is celebrating its 50th anniversary and during that time has provided more than 200 affordable housing units and millions of healthy meals and safe nights for thousands of people in our communities. Um, this is no small feat. These accomplishments have been achieved over many years and at their core have been driven by the guiding principle that no family should have to wonder if their child will have a safe place to sleep and food to eat every day. I'd like to thank everyone at the People's Emergency Center for the work that they are doing to ensure that our children and families have roofs over their heads, food in their stomachs, and access to opportunities and services that will allow them to be, um, the best versions of themselves and live with dignity. And with that, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Public Health and Human Services to hold hearings regarding expanding Philadelphia's mobile crisis response capacity to develop strategies and best practices for non-lethal de-escalation crisis intervention and restraint of individuals experiencing mental or emotional distress. Introduced today by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just really wanted to take a brief second and say a big thank you to, uh, former Council member, uh, and many other things, John White Jr., who, uh, is with the consortium and who has worked very closely with us on this resolution and, uh, mobile hu- health crisis, uh, here in the city of Philadelphia. And with that, I call for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and motion carries. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Parks and Recreation to hold public hearings on the status of the City of Philadelphia's Rebuild Initiative. Introduced today by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and commemorating the 10th anniversary of the Asian American Chamber, uh, Greater, uh, Chamber of Commerce of Greater Philadelphia. Introduced today by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you. I move for adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Motion carries. Resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. That concludes our calendar for today. And are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? Speeches on behalf of the majority? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gim.
Thank you very much, Council President. Um, I want to acknowledge, uh, Councilmember and Public Safety Chair Jones for his earlier resolution calling for the support of our city council body on a very serious matter involving the state. I want to especially acknowledge, uh, the members of Local 159, President David Robinson, and all the members, uh, who are at the Juvenile Justice Services Center and, in fact, across our city prisons. Uh, the conditions that were described, um, in public today are ones that have been well-known to the state, uh, for weeks on end. It's one that we had hoped, um, as colleagues, all of us, uh, on those calls, uh, late at night, in the morning, at the Juvenile Justice Services Center, to ask the state to take action on not only the inhumane conditions that our staff and young people are enduring, but on those young people's actual legal rights. Um, it is unconscionable that, uh, a, a center that was designed to originally be, um, a place of, uh, a model for how young people could be cared for was supposed to be a temporary holding facility only, um, between 10 to 30 days where they could get schooling, recreation, mental health supports, um, find mentors, uh, and have programming, um, has now been turned into one of the worst examples of what happens under state neglect, uh, in our juvenile justice system. And to be clear, um, as somebody who has worked on this area since I've come onto council and before I came onto council, I am appalled at the length and the effort to which this state has denied young people justice, decency, and humanity in all sectors, even before we got to this particular crisis over here. Um, I have sat on a, uh, for 18 months on a task force recommending common sense transformations, uh, to basic rules and regulations that would make the governance, accountability, and management of juvenile centers, um, easier, more humane. Um, and we have watched as none of those recommendations from that task force got implemented, even though they were enacted by the governor himself. Um, so we have lost, uh, we have no rose-colored glasses on today. Um, we are crystal clear about what needs to be done and the rights that, that, that must be granted. We are also crystal clear about the safety of individuals who are in our care, whether they are, uh, city workers, um, who are parents, um, who are, uh, you know, uh, leaders and civic leaders themselves, who, who need to go back healthy and happy to a ho- to a home and family for whom they care for, or whether they are children of, of young people and families all across the city who expect their children to be treated with decency, humanity, and love, um, at a time when they need it the most. Um, I think what we've heard clearly from the horrific prison experiments, um, in history to the cries at the conditions of the Juvenile Justice Services Center, to the calls of our own youth, um, here in this hall, that they need basic support for their mental health, to get back and forth from school, to have a city show them some love and decency, that this conversation about public safety doesn't start until, uh, we stand up for our young people unless we draw the line on what public safety needs to look like in our city, um, and that we have a responsibility to do it in all parts of our city, that actually public safety is defined, um, not just, uh, on interactions between our police and, and individuals, but actually in the ways in which we care for people. Um, in our public schools, in our Juvenile Justice Services Center, um, in the places and homes and, uh, parks and recreation centers and libraries which should be open, programs which should be running. Um, that is our strongest public safety message and initiative that we can do. And when those go wrong, um, when we've, when we neglect them and then we bring them back into conditions that we allow to also go into decay, also allowed to be disinvested in, that is when this council body has got to stand united with the administration and say no more. Um, and I think that that is what this, uh, complaint to, uh, the governor, and it is an unusual and bold step, and it could not be more important or more urgent or more overdue than it has long been for so many, uh, communities and families. But I want to thank Chairman Jones for that, um, for that, for allowing us an opportunity. I want to thank the administration for drawing a line in the sand. But I most especially want to thank the members of Local 159 and the families of the young people who are at the Juvenile Justice Services Center or in any of our city institutions to tell them that we will not go back to that dark past that we had when we turned a blind eye to what would happen. Um, we are going to take this on. Um, we want to thank people for bringing their stories to light. That is, in fact, the only way anything changes in this world, um, and the only way in which hard actions need to happen. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. Um, I have a lot to say. Um, first of all, it's good to see, uh, so many people here in council today and so many people testifying today, uh, from the young people who, uh, came to see their government in action to the number of people who came to communicate their concerns as it relates to the state of our city and the city of Philadelphia. Uh, Council President, since you named me the Chair of the Education Committee a couple weeks ago, um, I've visited, uh, six different schools across the city of Philadelphia. And when I say that the condition our young people are, are, the condition of our city and how we treat our young people as it relates to, um, everything from our, uh, schools to what happens out of school time, to what we're going to talk about, uh, continued on this floor today as it relates to the juvenile center, um, i- i- is really an embarrassment. Um, the, the members of Local 159 who came here today, uh, talked about the fact that this incident took place, um, weeks ago in early October, and we thanked them for reaching out and letting us know what was going on because without them reaching out, uh, we would have never known what was taking place. I appreciate Councilmember Jones, uh, for his leadership in introducing the resolution today because we tried to solve this issue. Uh, we, we made phone calls, we sat on Zooms, we did as much as we can. Uh, Councilmember Gim just spoke about it before me, and at the end of the day, when the incident took place, there were 213 young people that was in the center. Um, as of today, there are over 220, which means since all of us have visited, since we've been on these calls, since we've, uh, basically put out a, a cry for help, um, things didn't get any better. Things have actually gotten worse. And so if I'm an employee, if I'm a member of Local 159 and I seen all these elected officials come by my workplace, if I'm one of those young people that's in that center and I seen all these elected officials come by and only see the conditions getting worse, it's similar to what the young sister who testified earlier today said, nobody cares about our children. That's the state of Philadelphia that we're in right now. I, I listened to the other sister talk about the conditions that her father had to deal with in the prison and the impact that it had on her and the fact that nobody spoke up. Nobody said nothing. You know, we've, myself and some of the freshman colleagues, uh, we've only been on council for a couple of years, but I know for me, um, a lot of the work that I do and my perspective on leadership comes out of my time, uh, being mentored and working under the Children's Defense Fund and Marion Wright Edelman. And one of the things that we studied in depth was the Cradle to Prison Pipeline. I never thought the day would come where I would be a part of a system that pushes the Cradle to Prison Pipeline. When I went and visited those young people at the center and I watched them basically in solitary confinement for almost 23 hours a day, it's not just about why they are in there right now, but who are they going to be when they come out? We understand that when you put young people in a position where they can't socialize, they can't exercise, they can't interact, they can't get a quality education, how could we then expect them to return to the collective and be a restorative part of society? That's not realistic. We're literally perpetuating the same negative interactions that they were involved in before they got into the center while they're in there. And one could even argue that we're making them worse. It is extremely disappointing, not just what's going on in the center, but the quality of life issues that children are facing all across the city of Philadelphia. So I join my colleagues today to beg and plead for help. I join the members of Local 159 to beg and plead for help. At the end of the day, I can't help but say it, you know, I, I, I have to believe that if the majority of those children in that center didn't look like me and some of my colleagues to my left and my right, the response would be different. I believe that in my heart. And so I refuse to be quiet. I refuse to not say nothing because I would hate for city council 25 years from now to introduce a resolution to apologize about how we treated the young people in the juvenile center. No, we're not going to do that. We're going to speak up now. We're going to scream at the top of our lungs and we're going to do everything we can to make sure that those young people does, are, are put in a position where they're not being oppressed. That is the closest thing to indentured servitude that I've ever seen in my life. And it's heartbreaking, it's disappointing, and I know for a fact that this legislative body will not stand for some of the things that we've seen when we went up there to visit. If you think we're exaggerating, if you think we're taking it a little bit too far, go visit. Listen to them young people screaming out of their rooms, calling our names, calling for help. It is literally the saddest thing I've ever seen since I've been on city council. It's heartbreaking and we're demanding that the state step up and do their part to be able to support this crisis and this emergency that we're dealing with. Thank you, Council President. I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you colleagues. And first start by thanking Councilmember Jones, uh, Chair of Council's Committee on Public Safety, and all of the colleagues on the Committee on Public Safety, uh, and all of my colleagues who have spoken about this issue relative to JJSC. Uh, and I just wanted to rise and stand in support of those efforts. Although I'm not a member of the committee, I've worked very closely with all the members on the committee on this issue. Uh, also have family who work in that center and appreciative of the staff members, uh, who called us and, and emailed us and spoke out about what was going on because if it were not for their efforts, we would not have known what was happening, uh, in that facility. So I also rise to call on, uh, Governor Wolf, Acting Secretary Meg Sneed, and all the officials in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, uh, to help us alleviate the challenges that we are faced with at JJSC in Philadelphia so that we can get the population and the census down there, not only for the young people, but for the staff who are dedicated and still go and show up day in and day out, so many of them, um, who were injured, uh, as a result of the riot that took place a couple of weeks ago. So we are also calling on the Governor, uh, and Acting Secretary Sneed to help us bring that population and census down at JJSC. And lastly, I just wanted to remind all of our colleagues that we are hosting a lunching and, uh, briefing, uh, for Visit Philadelphia in the caucus room after council today. Uh, so we're asking all colleagues to come over, uh, to learn more about, uh, our commercial corridors and economic revitalization in the city. It'll happen right after council today. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gardier.
Thank you, Council President. Um, I also want to speak on Majority Leader Jones's, uh, resolution. Um, I want to stand in solidarity with my colleagues that have talked about what's going on at the Juvenile Justice, uh, Center. And I also want to thank, um, the staff who came here to speak up today, but who have been raising their voices, um, probably for a long time, but who reached out to us, um, a few weeks ago to make us aware of, um, what's been going on. Um, I want-
on. I want to be very clear, there is no situation where it is acceptable for a facility built to house no more than 180 young people on a given day to have a regular census of 220 to 280 young people. There is no situation where it is acceptable for staff-to-resident ratios to be so skewed that fewer than 10 adults are left to operate a facility housing more than 200 young people. We are in a crisis. Workers at the Juvenile Justice Center are not safe. Young people at the Juvenile Justice Center are not safe, and the crisis that these individuals are facing is a direct result of failures at the state level. Upwards of 90 of the young people currently housed at the JJSC are assigned to state care, and as far as we know, counties outside of Philadelphia have dozens of openings to safely house these residents. Failing to place these residents in other facilities has only exacerbated the safety concerns that are now being faced by the staff and the young people at JJSC. I will not, and this body will not, stand for the state's abdication of its responsibilities to these kids and to the staff who are risking their safety to operate the facility. I'll also say that it's especially insulting that this is happening at the same time that legislators at the state level are participating in theatrics to feign like they care about public safety here in Philadelphia. I am calling on my colleagues in city council and at the state to come together to create a solution because this cannot go on any longer, and I want to thank all of my colleagues on the Public Safety Committee as well as Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson and you, Council President, for coming together over these last few weeks to see what we could do to alleviate the situation. I would suggest that both state and local officials come together on a daily basis to enact a plan to improve the conditions at JJSC and that we continue to do that until our young people and our staff are safe there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for, for your comments, Councilwoman, and it is a very, very challenging issue, very sad, and as usual, city council steps to the plate and has to do what we have to do. So, you know, we'll have the full support of all our resources here in council, and our conversations primarily with the state, making sure that people understand not only for this particular governor, for the next governor, because this is an issue that is going to go on for a while unless we do something dramatic and drastic. So, thank you all. Any additional speeches? Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
First and foremost, I want to thank the members of this body for being courageous for a very long time on these issues from the adult prisons to the Juvenile Justice Center. I used to say when I first came on board that if 300 whales washed up on the shore of Delaware, every marine biologist, including Jop Gusteau himself, would figure out why and how we could save them. But when it comes to our babies, why is there an absence of urgency, an absence of urgency? Well, we didn't want this fight. Mr. President, you've negotiated on behalf, Mayor Commissioner Ali has been shuttle diplomacy, trying to figure out answers to this while our babies remain in danger, while our workers remain in danger. Most of the staff at the Justice Center are females, females, that ran into a foray of young people, some of them 200 pounds plus, bravely taking a beating on behalf of those babies. We began, and, and I want to thank in particular, Member Gim, for her study over the years and making these recommendations on how to change things that are going ignored. And so, we didn't want this fight. We tried to avoid this fight. We tried to negotiate this fight, but we are up for this fight on behalf of our kids. It got so bad on a Zoom, and it was so, you know, yeah, but it's your problem. No, it isn't. 90 of those kids are wards of the state, literally. And one of the things that is tattooed in my mind is that, and this came out of Member Gim's study, that the longer they stay there, and they're staying there longer, it's supposed to be a temporary placement, their time doesn't count until they get to state custody. So, they're sitting there with their rights being violated. Our minds adjust to wherever we are. If we wind up on a college campus, we become students. We wind up in city council, we become legislators. You wind up in a gladiator school, you become a gladiator in order to adjust and survive. It got so bad on one of those Zooms, I asked the city solicitor, how many laws would I violate if we got the sheriff to get two sheriff buses, fill those in custody of the state, and take them to the governor's mansion, and knock on the door and say, here's your kids. The only reason we didn't attempt it was because of the benefit of those babies. They don't deserve to be treated like that. So, we tried to avoid this fight and this confrontation. I want to thank again the mayor, Tamar Alexander, Commissioner Ali, for doing it quietly, you behind the scenes, but we are risking a catastrophe, and as my colleague says, we will not be silent. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you so much. To all our colleagues, thank you so much. We'll keep doing what we have to do, okay? So, that concludes our speeches for today by the minority and the majority, and with that, Chair recognizes Councilman Squillen for a motion to adjourn. No, Councilman Squillen is not here. Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, October 27th, 2022 at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you. It's been moved and second to council stand adjourned until Thursday, October 27th, 2022, 10:00 a.m. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you all very much. Please be safe.